Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting. Today is Monday, June 9th. We are at the third-floor multipurpose room at the Bennington-Vermont Fire Facility. My name is Tom Haley. I have the honor of chairing this board, and I will ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Nancy White.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Jim Sullivan.
Good evening, Jackie Matts.
Good evening, Clark Adams.
Ahmed Woods.
Also with us is Town Manager Stu Herd. We have Jonas Spivak, who will be handling the audiovisual materials for us. We have Nancy Lively, who continues to take excellent minutes. And we have Josh Boucher covering us for Cat TV. Right, we'll begin tonight, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ed, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the true flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. And Jim, since you are freshly returned from vacation, I'll have you read our vision statement this evening and remind us of what we strive to achieve.
Thank you. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a couple housekeeping items. First, we need to make a change to the agenda. The Energy Commission will not be able to join us this evening, so I will ask for a motion to remove the Energy Commission item from tonight's agenda. They'll be joining us next time.
Make the motion and change the number.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, I have to read a brief statement, please, if you'll indulge me. At the Tuesday, June 3rd meeting of the Select Board, five members voted to approve entering into the mediated settlement agreement with various entities owned by Michael and Thomas Malone to resolve certain outstanding litigation against the town of Bennington. In expressing our individual votes, we stated that we were doing so under advice of council. On reflection, we are concerned that having expressed our vote in this manner, we created the impression that council specifically recommended that we approve the settlement agreement. This was not our intention. Instead, we want to be clear that the town has been represented by council in all litigation proceedings, including those involved by Michael and Thomas Malone, and in this instance, the board consulted with council in making that decision. There were a number of factors and risks in either accepting the agreement or rejecting it. These were discussed in detail with council. We wanted to make clear that after consultation and in consideration of the town's goals and needs, the Select Board approved the settlement agreement. And also, Ed Woods has asked for a moment to address.
After our most recent meetings, I wanted to apologize to my colleagues on the board and to the public. While frustration is a part of this work, I recognize that there are better ways to address disagreements. Over the past week, I've heard from many of you, and I truly appreciate those who reached out. While some called me out, and you were right to do so, others voiced their shared frustration and support, and I'm grateful for that encouragement. It means a great deal to know that so many understood my perspective. But moving forward, I will approach conflicts more thoughtfully and look for more constructive solutions. Thank you for giving me the minute.
Thank you very much. Next, we're on to the consent agenda. We have a stack of minutes here, which I've tried to sort out by who is at which meeting. I would note first that Stu, in all of the minutes, May 20th, May 21st, and...bear with me.
28th?
May 28th and May 30th, Ed Woods was not at those meetings.
So there's an error in the minutes?
Yep.
Yep.
And then...
So Tom, are you correcting that before we go further on that?
Well, because I need to divide these up into who is at which before we can vote on them, and it's not as easy as one might think. So we have the May 20th and 21st. We were all there, I think, except for Ed. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 20th and 21st?
For the purpose of discussion, I move to approve the minutes of...what are the dates? May 20th and 21st?
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Any comments on those minutes? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
On the abstention, Tom.
Right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have May 28th and 30th. For the purpose of discussion, could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
And I should have two abstentions?
Abstained.
And...Stuart, if I miss one here, yell at me. Next, we have...we'll do June 2nd next, and then we'll backtrack to May 19th. An executive session, which Jim Sullivan was absent. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And abstention?
Abstained.
Thank you. And finally, the minutes from our regular meeting of May 19th?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion, any changes? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Next, we'll do the warrants, and I didn't see any licenses. So could I have a motion to accept the warrants?
So moved.
And a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
I have a question on some of the warrants.
Okay, I'm sorry, Jackie.
So I tried to look at the chart of accounts, but I couldn't see where these fell. I'm looking at page four, check number 403351, $15,690.05 for solar.
Yes, that's a payment back to the company for credits we received. They're one of the energy committees or energy companies that we essentially get a credit for our electricity from, and we have to pay them back a certain fund. So we get a discount on our electricity by using this solar company for some of our functions, as I've said in the past. All of the town electricity right now is generated from renewable resources. This solar project is one, and the other is the hydroelectric dam at the river, at Blumsec River.
Great. The other one I was curious about was on page seven, check number 403381, for camera and video, for $28,128.
Yes, that is the...I believe that is the camera and video that goes with the police department's upgrade for their in-car video and camera opportunities. And it's part of a contract that we are paying out of a reserve fund.
Great.
That's what I believe on that one.
Anyone else? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience on that. Next up, we have public comment, and we have quite a list this evening. I will remind you that public comment is to allow residents an opportunity to share information or make announcements that benefit the community at large. Should not be related to an item on the agenda. You'll be afforded the opportunity to comment on those items at those times. Please do keep your comments to three minutes or less. State your legal name and town of residence, and I'll remind you that this is not a period of back and forth with the Select Board. If you do have questions that we can answer briefly, we will attempt to do so; otherwise, we will follow up at a future meeting. So first, we have Wendy Sharkey on the 160th.
Good evening. I'm Wendy Sharkey. I'm the Director of the Bennington Free Library, and tonight, I'd like to tell you about the 160th anniversary of the library, hence the headgear. On June 23rd, at 3:00, we will be having a birthday party. In 1865, on June 23rd, the library came into being, and we feel that it's just right to invite the whole town to this party. Come to the party, have some cake, have some lemonade. Come and give us some birthday wishes. Tell us what you'd like to see the library look like in the future. Come and meet the state librarian. Come and meet Mary Morrissey, who I see in the background here. We're hoping to have a few Select Board members there and some of our board members as well. This is your opportunity to come and tell us what you want the library to do that it isn't doing. And it's like a sort of a survey, but in a nice way, and we'll feed you cake and lemonade. So do come and help us celebrate. Thank you.
Wendy, can you tell us the date and time again?
June 23rd, at 2:00.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Peter Lawrence on open meeting law.
Good evening. I'm Peter Lawrence. I'm a resident of Bennington, 70 MacIntosh Lane. I'm also a retired, fully retired attorney, but after the last meeting that I was at on June 3rd, I did look up the law on open meetings. And under Title I, Vermont Statute annotated Section 312, nothing that is done at a meeting in violation of the open meeting law is binding. Two, subsection H of that statute requires that the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to express its opinion on matters considered. If you remember the June 3rd meeting, there were two problems there. There was no disclosure of the substance of the matter being considered. And two, there was no opportunity for public comment on those matters. Seems to me that we have a violation of the open meetings law there, and maybe that's why the minutes of the June 3rd meeting were not put forward to be approved, but...and I will end with this. I strongly suggest that the board reconsider its June 3rd decision, schedule another...rescind it, schedule another meeting at which the public can be fully informed of all the details of the matter being considered, and there'd be opportunity for public comment. That's in keeping with the public, with the open meeting law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Diana...is it Leeser? On solar project.
It's a hard name. Okay. My name is Diana Leeser, and I'm a resident of Bennington on Courtland Lane. I only have three minutes to speak, which is nowhere near enough time for what I have to say to the Select Board and the Town Manager. For the last 12 years, we, the citizens of Bennington, along with the Town of Bennington Select Board and Town Manager, have successfully defended our beautiful, small town from a corporate solar developer who would scar our hillside with a huge, commercial-sized solar development. This commercial solar developer seeks only to enrich themselves, plain and simple. We learned last Monday of the complete reversal of the Select Board and Town Manager regarding the Chelsea and Apple Hill solar development projects. We learned last Monday of a special meeting to be held on Tuesday to ratify an agreement between ALCO and the Town of Bennington regarding this commercial solar development. We thought this must be untrue. We were shocked and in disbelief. The thought was unfathomable. When we attended the special meeting last week, we were not allowed to speak. Our opinions and our voices were completely disregarded. As our elected representatives, all we asked you to do was listen to us. You didn't have to respond, you just had to listen, but you refused. After reading the settlement agreement, after its ratification, after the meeting concluded, it is clear there are more reasons behind ratification of this agreement than not wanting to spend additional money on attorney fees. It is clear to us the Ben-Hi redevelopment project was the major catalyst to ratification of this agreement. Essentially, if not ratified, the solar developer would continue to sue the town and delay the Ben-Hi redevelopment project indefinitely because the solar developer can, because their pockets are deep and they are attorneys. I think it worthwhile to discuss the ramifications of what you have done, especially related to the reclassification of Apple Hill as rural residential. There is nothing in the agreement that says this land, this 27 acres, will be a solar project. The solar developer could...development could be replaced by housing, which could mean dealing with the PFAS contamination and water line extension, which the town would be on the hook for. Additionally, in the agreement, Section 10, the last two sentences read, "Provided, however, that these releases shall be null and void if Hale Resources LLC has not procured all funds necessary to complete the Ben-Hi project prior to December 31st, 2025. For this proviso, the acquisition of the property does not of itself constitute the financial closing." Does this mean if Hale doesn't get all the funding necessary, by December 31st, the agreement is null and void? Does this mean ALCO can sue again? Although you have...you may have been advised to ratify the agreement on the advice of council, as you said, each of you, our elected representatives, made that decision. You need to own it and to live with it. The people of Bennington deserve to know all the factors that led to this decision. We deserve to know why.
Next, we have Bill Knight on the solar project.
Good evening. I'm Bill Knight. I'm President of the Apple Hill Homeowners Association. Excuse my appearance, these meetings are cutting into my pickleball. But kind of piggybacking on what Diane had to say, I was going to ask this last week, but we weren't permitted during that clandestine meeting. Over the years, probably the last eight or 10 years, this site has been deemed as not a preferred site. It's gone all the way to the PUC, the Vermont Supreme Court. It's been turned down time and time again. They can't get a certificate of public good because, as I said, it doesn't meet the requirements or the criteria. We think it's going to be a real eyesore for the town. It's going to be visible from the monument, from the golf course, from the Welcome Center. I've been to that spot when we had a PFOA...I'm sorry. Another topic. And we had the PUC there. I've stood up there where the site is going to be. I can look right down on the Welcome Center, and I'm wondering also, if they do manage to make this solar site there, how they're going to manage that? Are they going to blow that up? That's all ledge. Is that going to be dynamite? Is that going to take traffic? We're going to have to pay taxes to reroute that for a while? There's just a lot of things I wonder about that. But I guess my root cause question is, how did this become a preferred site overnight when it hasn't been with all we've done for the last 12 years? I mean, just briefly, how is that now a preferred site? I mean, that's the whole basis of whether or not they can have the solar site.
Bill, I'm sorry. As I said at the beginning of public comment, we don't do back and forth at these.
I'm not asking back and forth.
If there are questions that we're able to answer quickly, we'll do so at the end of public comment.
So you don't have an answer in other words? Okay, well, I have another quick question. Same thing, when you read this agreement...I won't go into all this because I'm not an attorney, and I may not be able to speak to all these things, but on the agreement, on page two, the last sentence, it's talking about whether or not this can be visible and so forth, whether or not it's acceptable for the town. I'll read this last line. It says, "The town further agrees to support the project regardless..." There's a word for it. "...regardless of the number before the Vermont PUC or the appeal from the PUC to the Vermont Supreme Court as they have considered." So as I read that, and as I said, I'm not an attorney, it sounds to me like, no matter what the PUC says or the Vermont Supreme Court says, that this is not a preferred site, they're going to go with it anyway. They're just going to ignore what they're saying. I mean, the Vermont Supreme Court's the leading court in Vermont. Can we just override that and ignore it at the expense of the views and the citizens
Again, Bill, we don't do back and forth until we end the public comment. I'm sorry.
So you mean you don't know? I mean, I'm just asking for quick answers. I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot or embarrass anybody or anything.
If there are answers, we feel we can...if there are questions we're able to answer, we do so at the end of public comment. It's policy for everybody, and we keep the policy that way for fairness for everybody.
Okay. I just...it's just, I assume you've all read the agreement, or you wouldn't have okayed it. I read it. I can sure quite a crowd can. Okay. Well, if you get those answers, I'd like to know. Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Morrissey.
Mary Morrissey, Bennington. On Tuesday, June 3rd, I attended the Bennington Select Board's special meeting pertaining to the Malones lawsuit against the Town of Bennington and their proposed Apple Hill solar projects. To say the least, it was a very upsetting meeting. No one from the audience was allowed to ask even a procedural question. All we kept being told by some Select Board members was that the town's attorney came to an agreement with the Malones and that the town's lawsuit would be dropped if the Select Board voted to ratify the agreement. One Select Board member even said that they were not really sure what they were voting on, but because they were advised by the town attorney that they were going to vote in favor of the agreement. So I ask the question of all of you, and I'm sure I will not get an answer because I do understand the rules for public comment, but I'm going to ask it anyway. How did last week's meeting, where the public was not allowed to speak, comply with the law governing the public's rights at an open meeting? One VSA 312H clearly states that in open meeting, the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to express its opinion on matters considered by the public body during the meeting. Public comment shall be subject to reasonable rules established by the chairman, which they were not. I had wanted to simply ask the question, if all the numerous different proposed solar projects, the way they were introduced over 12 years by the Malones, if they would all be possible to be built up on that site? As a reminder to all, the Malones who almost sued anyone and everyone for even asking the most simple question, lost multiple times at the Vermont Supreme Court, the Public Utility Commission, the Bennington Select Board, the Bennington Planning Commission, and the Bennington Development Review Board. There was a proposal submitted several years ago by the Malones to blast the ledge on the Malones-Harwood Hill property in order to place the solar panels 10 to 12 feet deep down in the ledge in order to screen the solar project better. That was denied on all levels. As you may all recall, that property is in the PFO designation area for contamination, and that any blasting or any type of soil movement could further place PFOAs airborne into our atmosphere and on a fairly massive level. I had concerns then, as others did as well, and I do now, because this agreement that our Select Board just agreed to does not specifically state how Mr. Malone is going to develop on this parcel and how it will be done. I can only imagine with some of these proposals, it is not in the best interest of the community, especially if we're talking PFOA or some other issues that have a negative effect and have continued to have a negative effect on our community. This should be concerning to all of us as a community, and I hope you'll listen.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have Jack Rosserd Mundenly on the Bennington County Multicultural Center.
Hello there. Not a solar issue. My name is Jack Rosserd Mundenly. I'm here to talk about the Bennington County Multicultural Community Center with a couple of updates on our work. First, I'm very happy to report that this past weekend, we had two very successful, well-attended events. We hosted a Know Your Rights training in collaboration with Migrant Justice, Bennington County Indivisible, and Vermont Interfaith Action that was held over at the Bennington Free Library, which is soon to celebrate a very exciting milestone. That was a really well-attended training where Rachel from Migrant Justice came and spoke about the constitutional protections and rights that apply to all residents of the United States regardless of their immigration status or lack thereof. Really important community information for all of us to have. The other event that we hosted was a regional celebration of the holiday this past weekend, Eid al-Adha, which is the second Eid in the Muslim calendar, and that was a chance for cross-cultural connection and cultural exchange, and it was hosted up at Lake Perrin. The second thing that I want to talk about is, many of you likely heard this past week about some of the new travel bans that have gone into effect from the federal level, and I've come here and spoken a couple of times about the fact that refugee arrivals have been completely halted to the United States. So the travel ban itself doesn't necessarily change that, but it does apply to countries that are represented in the local refugee community, so it is something that's causing continued stress and anxiety for a lot of the families, especially those who are still separated from family and loved ones who are overseas and who now have an even less clear path to... clear path to possibly join their relatives someday through the pre-existing process that they were a part of. With all of that understood and in place, there is still a very narrow avenue through which people can come to the United States legally through our programs, which is people who hold what are called special immigrant visas or SIV status, and that is a status reserved for people who worked closely with the U.S. military. It's mostly people from Iraq and Afghanistan. And through a collaboration with an organization called No One Left Behind, we were actually able to welcome another Afghan family of three people to Bennington on March 27th, sorry, May 27th. That family includes the husband in the family, who was a doctor in Afghanistan and who actually conducted the medical exams for other SIV holders so that they were able to travel prior to his own travel, his wife, who is pregnant with their second child, who was a midwife in Afghanistan, and then their young son, who is about to turn four. So we were really pleased to welcome them, and we're also expecting another family from Afghanistan who will arrive on Wednesday of this week. So amongst the challenges that are out there, we do still have an avenue to welcome people to Bennington, and we remain so committed to this work even under the various pressures and changes that are coming to us because we know it's the morally right thing to do. We are concretely helping people escape danger, find safety, and start new lives here in Bennington, and we're really uniquely positioned to do that well as a community because of how welcoming we can be and how well we come together, not only those of us who work at the center, but those throughout the community who help people feel welcomed upon their arrival. But aside from that, this is something that is a true benefit and investment to the broader community. Talented people from around the world with a whole variety of different skills and gifts are coming to Southern Vermont through this program, and we truly see it as an investment in the future of the community as a whole. We are under intense federal funding challenges at the moment in addition to the various halts and bans that are in place around travel. And so if you are interested in learning more about our work or possibly supporting it directly or helping to support some of the families who are currently traveling, you can reach out to us at benningtoncountymcc@gmail.com. That's benningtoncountymcc@gmail.com, and we're not slowing down. Thank you.[744.38][744.38](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Jack. Next, we have Kelly Carroll, CPARB. Thank you, and Select Board meetings last week.
I want to offer some thank yous and reflections after learning I was not reappointed to the Community Policing Advisory Review Board, CPARB. I'm grateful for the opportunity I had to serve on CPARB, and I want to begin by sincerely thanking the 2022 Select Board for appointing me. This was my first time serving on any municipal board or committee, something that the board knew. Although guidance after the initial onboarding was at times limited, I tried to approach the role with a commitment to listen, learn, and serve with integrity. I'm disappointed by the decision not to reappoint me, but I'm not surprised. Running for Select Board comes with risks, but I remain committed to public service and to values like transparency, accountability, and long-term planning, values I brought to CPARB and will continue to carry forward. I want to thank the members of CPARB, the Bennington Police Department, the community members who supported us, and the many organizations that welcomed our listening sessions and participated in our forum. It's essential to get into the community, to listen, and to be present. Ed, I appreciate your comment earlier. While I want to encourage others to get involved in local government, I must be honest, this hasn't always been a positive experience. I've been uncomfortable with the lack of transparency at the tone and the tone at several Select Board meetings these last two years. Members talking over one another, walking out mid-meeting, eye-rolling, and interruptions when the public or fellow board members speak. That kind of behavior continues to undermine public trust and discourages civic participation. The people of Bennington deserve open, inclusive governance where differing viewpoints are welcomed, not penalized. Last month, Family Feud asked, "Name the most underappreciated job." And as you can imagine, teachers and nurses were top answers, rightfully so. But the number one response, "Police officer." And that answer resonated with me. I want to push back gently on what I see as a loud but small anti-police voice in town. I believe most of Bennington supports our police, even if that's not always reflected at the Select Board level. We have an incredible Public Works Department here, with a manager who's thought outside of the box, hiring a highly skilled team that allows more work to be done in-house, saving taxpayers money, and I thank them all for what they do. But it's hard to justify why the starting pay in Public Works is just a little bit higher than a new officer's starting wage, especially when we're down eight officers and many of them can drive 30 minutes in just about any direction and earn $10,000 or more per year. That is not sustainable. That's why I encourage this board to engage with the Bennington Police Department in a collaborative and supportive way, not through a top-down authoritarian oversight model, but through mutual respect and partnership. That's how real progress happens. Thank you, and thank you for the honor of serving on CPARB these last couple of years. Have a wonderful evening.[1015.43][1015.43](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we have Sarah Beth Ward, speaking on transparency.
I'm going to read a statement too. Sarah Beth Ward from Bennington. The topics that I was going to talk about have already been discussed tonight, but I'm going to read it anyway. I am very disappointed at the number of executive sessions that we have seen from the Select Board in the past few weeks. This current Select Board has not been as transparent as the public deserves. The two meetings last week on Monday and Tuesday proved my point. Executive meetings were held prior to the two public meetings, but the neighbors that had been fighting the solar site projects were not even given a chance to comment or ask questions. I heard the reason was because of the way that the meeting was warned. If that is the case, then why was it not warned in a different way so the public would have been allowed to speak? The members of the board are losing the trust of the citizens of Bennington. I also just learned that through an executive session vote, Kelly Carroll and Scott Richmond were not reappointed to the CPARB. As I have publicly stated before, this CPARB under Kelly Carroll and Kate Cost has done more outreach to this town than any other board in Bennington. They did many listening sessions to find out what the people of Bennington were thinking. Ironically, now the Select Board is starting to have listening sessions. Would you please comment, or could you comment, on the reason that these two individuals were not reappointed to the board? Thank you. And I also do want to thank you for your statement tonight, too.[1114.15][1114.15](APPLAUSE).
And finally, we have Will Greer with a legislative update.
I got to get on the list, too, sir.
Okay, I'll get you.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to keep this one really short. Okay, so the legislature has somewhat adjourned as of right now. We're still waiting on that final education bill that the House and Senate are hopefully coming to an agreement on soon, and then we'll send that off to the governor. We passed a few, and I'm going to say just a few, pieces of legislation this year, 96 bills to be exact. Seventy-four of those bills have already become law. And I was going to touch tonight on healthcare and housing is the primary two things, but I actually wanted to take this time, again, to be very brief, and just say that next time, we'll dedicate the whole three minutes to education and just going over that because it's still questionable whether we'll have an education bill or not, but just reminding people to just keep a lookout on Front Porch Forum. I'm going to send out, it's about eight pages long, but this is my end-of-session report. It'll detail all the healthcare, housing, environmental bills we voted on, so just keep a lookout for that, and then hopefully, if you have any questions after that, you can just reach out there. So I'll keep it short there. Thank you.[1193.11][1193.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Will. Mike, Mike Bethel.
First off, I want to say, is there some way you can fix that button on the door downstairs outside so it works? I mean, I don't want you paid for it, but the handicap button, the big blue square, is it the third time, fourth time?
Does it not work? You push it, it doesn't open?
No, it does not open. Secondly, I want to, to the young people in this audience, I want you to look, if you can, at the last meeting of the Select Board. And as you get older and do your thing in life, make sure you honor the people that represent you if you run for office. Don't treat them like the people up here treated the last group of citizens in front of them. And to Jack Mundenly, I call him Jack Sprat affectionately, make sure you show all your people that are coming in this country, show them that meeting, and say, "This is what you moved away from, and here's what you're moving towards in Bennington. You won't get to speak. You won't get honored by your other citizens or your board members." And I am also here to tell you, there will be a petition, and it's legal, it will be legal, if the planning board goes along with what you people did. We have 30 days to wipe that out, and you can pass the word on to the Malone's. They can sue me all they frigging want, but we will not settle for what you people signed and traded us out to. They're a terrible group of people, the Malone's, and you let them blackmail this board. And that's as clear as you can get. I've read the documents, I've done everything, I talked to council, I'm going to talk to people upstate. It's disgusting, when not all of you, but the majority of that board voted for. And Jim, you wrote a beautiful town plan, and they're going to rip it up and throw it out when you were on BCRC. That is not a perfect site for this. And the Malone's are vindictive, and if they don't get what they want, and you do all the zoning changes that you plan on doing, they can build one hell of a monstrosity up there that we will not want in this community. So if you could fix the button, maybe make it so I don't have somebody like Mr. Monks lower this mic all the time, go back to a table where people could sit and put their papers on it. I don't think it's too much to ask. I don't think it's too creative for you people to think of. Thank you.[1374.41][1374.41](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that did not have the opportunity to do so? Stuart, you'll make sure that button's working, please?
It's supposed to be set automatically, so I don't understand what's happening.
All right, because it's been an issue for a few weeks, and we waited long enough for that thing to get put in. All right. Next on our agenda...
(CROSSTALK).
Yes, Dan?
I know that the Select Board is probably about, there are a couple of questions I can answer real quickly.
Okay, please.
If you think it's appropriate.
Oh, go ahead.
There was at least a concern that the Town would have the authority to somehow overrule the Public Utilities Commission or the Supreme Court. Absolutely not the case, even if we wanted to, which we wouldn't. That cannot happen and will not happen, so just to be clear. There's also a concern that, I don't know, perhaps the settlement agreement was misread, that the Select Board has agreed preemptively, regardless of the Planning Commission's actions, to change the zoning on the solar site. That is not true. What the Select Board agreed to do is submit that request from the Malone's to the Planning Commission and have them commence the process of taking public input on that, et cetera. So I just, that is not a foregone conclusion. The process is just being kicked off for folks to comment on that, and that will probably be sometime several weeks from now. So those are two easy ones. I'm sure there's some other easy ones I missed, but just wanted to clarify those.
Good, Dan, here's the first part, I didn't quite get it, about whether or not the Board would just override the Supreme Court.
So the Select Board neither has the authority nor the desire to overrule either the Public Utilities Commission or the Supreme Court.
Well, next, I think you've noticed we have quite a few younger folks in the audience tonight. Our next presentation will come from the MAU and ACT Choice Group, and I will invite them to take the podium now.
Hello, we are Choice, and we will be giving a brief presentation about our work at Mount Anthony Union Middle School. I'm Abby.
I'm Leila.
And I'm Paisley. We also have a few others who aren't here today, and they are Adeline, Leana, Cora, and Kiara.
Gracie.
Choice, formerly known as the Youth Leadership Group, is groups of MAU middle school and high schoolers with the goal of promoting healthy behaviors among our classmates and supporting and improving the school climate and broader community. Choice stands for Choose How Our Influence Changes Everything. Choice is a partnership between our schools and ACT, a substance misuse prevention organization focused on supporting healthy youth in the Bennington region. The advisors of the Choice Group are Ms. Coymans, the Prevention Coordinator at the middle and high school, and Alyssa from ACT Bennington. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, or YRBS for short, is a national survey that students take every two years on health topics. The survey includes health risk behaviors, for example, the use of substances like alcohol or cannabis, as well as protective behaviors. For example, exercise, eating together as a family, or having an adult in school you feel like they can talk to. At a training, at a training with an organization called Up for Learning, we learned to analyze the YRBS and looked at 2023 data from our school district to help find the topics that we wanted to bring attention to in our community. The results helped the school and our group plan and create projects that we can help improve the health and safety of our students in our school. When looking at the student survey data, we picked out things that we thought were strengths in our school and community. Over 75% of parents and guardians think it is very wrong for their children to use substances such as vapes, cannabis, alcohol, and other drugs. 92% of students feel there is an adult at home they can go to for help. 53% of LGBTQ students participate in an after-school club or program. 91% of students always have enough food at home to eat. 84% of BIPOC students have healthy ways to manage stress. These strengths have a positive impact on the health and well-being of students at the middle school. Here are the top three concerns we picked out from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data for our school. As you will see, some students are impacted by these issues more than others. Number one, mental health of female and LGBTQ plus students. 42% of female students reported that they have felt sad or hopeless in the past year compared to 20% of male students. 43% of LGBTQ plus students reported that they have felt sad or hopeless in the past year compared to 26% of straight and cisgender students. 36% of female students reported that they have ever done something to purposely hurt themselves without wanting to die, for example, cutting or burning themselves, compared to 15% of male students. And 47% of LGBTQ students reported that they have ever done something to purposely hurt themselves compared to 17% of straight and cisgender students. Number two, vaping among middle schoolers in the past 30 days. 13% of MAUMS students reported that they currently vape compared to 6% of middle school students statewide. 22% of female students reported that they currently vape compared to 6% of male students. Number three, cannabis, also known as weed, marijuana, or pot among middle schoolers in the past 30 days. 8% of MAUMS- Eight percent of MAUMs students currently use cannabis compared to four percent of middle school students statewide. And thirteen percent of female students reported that they currently use cannabis compared to fourteen percent of male students.
After looking at the student survey data and choosing our top concerns, we thought about what the root causes might be.
I'm sorry, you talked right into the microphone, I can't hear you at all. You pull it down closer.
After looking at the student survey data and choosing our top concerns, we thought about what the root causes might be. Root causes are...
Can we still hear you?
Does this good? Okay. After looking at the student survey data and choosing our top concerns, we thought about what the root causes might be. Root causes are our ideas about why these issues might be happening.
Here are some reasons why female and LGBTQ plus students might have poor mental health. Homophobia, I'm so sorry, and rejection, violence or assault, bullying, trauma, and videos or photos being shared without consent.
Some reasons why students might use cannabis include: they see family members doing it and their kids learn from parents, peer pressure or their friends are doing it. To cover up feelings or stress, they like the feeling of getting high. They try it because they are curious. To cope with family issues or trauma, they think it will give them energy. They try to do it to sleep.
Some reasons why students might vape nicotine include: because they are curious, they think it will give them energy, they like the flavors, peer pressure or to fit in or impress other people, their parents vape so they think it's okay, they do it to deal with stress, and they get addicted and then can't stop.
We had many talks about how we want to share our ideas on how to make, how to help make things better for students who struggle with mental health and/or students who use substances like cannabis and nicotine. We plan to create a series of educational bulletin boards in our school that also have resources. We started with the topic of sleep and connected it to the concerns we have shared. Lack of sleep has a big impact on students' mental health and their levels of anxiety. As we shared, some students use cannabis because they think it will help them fall asleep, but actually, over time, it will make their sleep quality worse. In the fall, we would like to create presentations for elementary school students that will help them make healthy choices for themselves, and also share ways to cope with difficult issues at home so they know that, how to get, so that they know how to, how they can get support.
Thank you.
Excellent job, guys. We've come to the part where we can ask you questions, I think. Oh, not yet? All right. Oh, there's a part two.
Hello, everyone. We are the High School Choice Group. We'll be sharing about what we focused on this year by looking at student survey data from our school and how we want to help make our school community healthier and Bennington more youth-friendly. I'm Sophia. We have another member who unfortunately could not show up. His name is Klaus.
I'm Miriam.
I'm Aiden.
I'm Jay.
I'm Vivian.
I'm Morgan.
We analyzed the high school section of the 2023 SBS Youth Risk Behavior Survey as well as the 2023 Core Measure Student Survey, which is an annual survey put out by the ACT Bennington. We also compared our YRBS high school data with the Vermont State averages.
are strengths that we and ally identified in our school community. Ninety-three percent of high school students have hobbies they enjoy. Sixty-two percent of high school students report there is a lot, at least one teacher or adult in the school they can talk to if they have a problem. Forty-one percent of high school students struggle, what is that? strongly agree or agree that in their community, they're, they feel they matter to people. Sorry.
After looking at the data and many conversations, these are the top concerns at our high school we selected. Sixty-six percent of MAU high school students say it would be sort of easy or very easy for them to get cannabis compared to fifty-eight percent of high school students statewide. Twenty-one percent of high school students report that they don't always have access to basic needs such as soap, period products, and clean clothes. Female high school students report using more alcohol than male students, and specifically, sixty-six percent of male, or female students ever used alcohol compared to forty-two percent of male students. Twenty-nine percent of female students report current use of alcohol compared to twenty percent of male students.
We looked at a couple of root causes for access to cannabis within the high school. Two of the most prevalent that we found was that they would either pay someone to get it, or they'd have parents or family who use it. When family members use substances, teens, Jesus, can very easily get their hands on them if wanted, especially if those substances aren't kept locked up or safely stored within the home. Cannabis is commonly used by a lot of adults for stress and sometimes for pain treatment, and since it comes from plant, it's perceived as less harmful than tobacco, and many people will choose cannabis over pills or injections for prescription medication if they can. Particularly in Vermont, cannabis is legalized for adults and therefore easier to get, whether it's from someone's backyard or an adult you know who went to the dispensary. Youth cannabis use is influenced by families and the general public. Downtown Bennington has a cannabis dispensary and a vape shop right on Main Street, one of which has bright colored signs and colorful bongs and pipes front and center in the window for any child or teen who passes by, grabbing attention from teens particularly. Parents or caregivers who use cannabis in front of families might reinforce the narrative to their kids that it's not harmful, or at least not as harmful as other substances. You hear about illegal substances like heroin, and you know off the bat that they're harmful, but most people who hear the words like weed and cannabis think of relaxation or parties, but not that it can be harmful, especially for younger people to use.
There are a number of root causes for why people have a difficult time accessing basic needs. Here are a few reasons we discussed. Adults in the household may spend money on things other than basic necessities for their families. The price for hygiene products are too high, especially in neighborhood stores, and there are often barriers to transportation to large stores. Food stamps can't be used for hygiene supplies or period products. There is stigma around asking for items like period supplies or around asking for help. Many people may not know about free resources available in our community, or the resources are free for a period of time and then are no longer provided. Many families in Bennington experience housing insecurity or the lack of secure, stable, and affordable housing, causing financial stress. And ultimately, they're all related to systematic challenges, which are problems deeply rooted within our society, rather than being individual issues. Systematic challenges that affect people's access to basic needs are social justice, access to quality healthcare, lack of education, gender and racial discrimination, and lack of social services.
Hi, I'm back up. After deciding on our top three concerns, we had great brainstorming sessions for actions within our school community that hopefully can be spread to other schools or into the general public of youth. To improve the access to basic needs, we're thinking about organizing an adulting skills share exchange fair at our school, where we invite community leaders or school staff or just fellow students to share adulting skills that connect students to resources. For example, how to find those resources in the community, visiting a food bank, using Narcan, even stuff like making a budget or doing laundry. Our goals with these plans are a few, but reducing stigma, empowering our students, and creating a school culture where people know they're safe and cared for are some of the most important. For reducing things like cannabis and nicotine use, we're thinking about using a thing called vape exchange, where in exchange for returning their vapes without a penalty or punishment from administration, they also get some kind of reward or incentive to promote that. This will be paired with resources like a youth quit kit that contains supportive materials to support reducing vape usage as well as educational talks. For cannabis in particular, we're thinking about a tea break presentation, because there's been an increase in vapes collected at the school containing THC. In the fall, we're planning to host a guest speaker, Tom Fontana, from the University of Vermont, for a presentation to our school as well as the general public about cannabis youth prevention and taking a tolerance break or tea break. Choice plans to introduce these presentations with data about cannabis use in our school as well as ease of Bennington. And the last thing, it's kind of simple, is just peer-to-peer resource sharing, which is right up there. It's presentations or tabling events during lunch to share what we have gathered.
We've talked about some of the pressures and challenges young people in Bennington are dealing with, especially around mental health and substance use. Now we'd like to share some ways our town can create a more positive environment for youth. We came up with some ideas we'd like to share with you. We would love to see a youth council where students can share ideas and give input to the Select Board about what's happening in Bennington. We think the town should discuss policies about how vaping tobacco shops can advertise in ways that target young people. We are thinking especially of places on Main Street or near schools that have flashy and colorful advertising. Places like the Rec Center and Willow Park don't always feel safe because substances are often being used there. We would like to see efforts to make these public spaces safer and a lot more youth-friendly. A lot of youth, young people, feel like we have to leave Bennington justifying things to do, which takes transportation and money. We'd love to see more incentives for businesses that offer fun, healthy things to do for all ages, like skating rinks, bowling alleys, or game cafes. Having drop-in spaces open on the weekends would give us somewhere to go just to hang out and get out of the house. We know there are programs for youth in Bennington, but they're not always easy to find. Maybe the town can promote these on the website and social media. Bennington has many empty downtown storefronts. It'd be cool to see these filled with artwork, especially made by local youth artists. Finally, safe space sign, sign on local businesses and pride flags year-round go a long way from making Bennington feel like a welcoming place for everybody.
Guys, that was really, really amazing. I mean, there are people much older than you that couldn't stand up before a microphone and talk like that, so thank you for doing that. I could tell you were all very nervous, and you overcame it splendidly, and the research and effort you put into this is absolutely astounding. So I will open it up for any questions from the board first.
Just a comment. Guys, great job. It was, you were full of really good information. You had my attention the whole time, and I learned a whole bunch of stuff that I was suspicious might be out there, but the hardcore data that you just shared with us, it's impossible for us to deny it, right? Thank you for bringing such good facts to the table.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll reiterate what everyone else has said already. Fantastic. It's really challenging to be up there. You did a fantastic job, and I love a lot of your ideas at the end. Really interesting, well thought out. One thing I had a question on, actually, I was a bit surprised during the presentation, and I heard some other folks while I was up here, that some of the challenges that you discussed seemed to affect females more than males, and I was wondering if you had sort of looked into why that was at all.
A big part of something that we realized was a lot of either social stigma or more pressure. Societally, in men, there's more ways to climb like a social ladder through things like sports and popularity with friends in general. For women, it's a little bit harder. Not a lot of people pay attention to women's sports or their issues, so using things like cannabis, as well as women are also more likely to be abused in more ways than one. Using things like cannabis, alcohol, or nicotine could help them seem more, what's the word?
Cop.
It could help them cope, and it could make them seem more appealing to people, so they can have more friends and better social life. Another thing we talked about, something that I feel like is a part of the whole teenage dream that gets pushed into a lot of movies, is that with men, the teenage dream can be a lot of like sports and going out with people, which is pretty easy to achieve. With women, for them, that can be going to parties and gaining more of a social status, because a lot of times, women are valued through social status rather than their skills, which is very unfortunate. And as mentioned, coping is a big part of it. It's not a healthy coping mechanism, but it is unfortunately one that exists.
Thank you so much. So insightful.
Jim?
Sorry. I also wanted to add on, another big reason we thought of why women do use substances is how they are perceived to deal with emotions rather than men are supposed to deal with emotions. Usually, as women, when having emotions, usually, it's not always taken as seriously due to people blaming it on just hormones or being dramatic. So women tend to push the emotions down so they don't be seen as that way and to be taken more seriously, and that deals with them, that happens with them, to deal with their emotions instead of expressing them, using substances to cope instead of actually trying to help and express their emotions.
Yeah, thank you all, as has been mentioned, very impressive. In a lot of ways, the data and the research you've done, as well as your ability to kind of encapsulate some of the issues and respond to questions, which goes to one of the things I, and I also really appreciate that you came up with a bunch of recommendations and ideas and things that you want to move forward on. And, you know, so I think like your idea of a youth council is really valuable. I think that would be really important input that the Select Board and other people in the community could have. I know I've talked before about downtown issues and getting youth into downtown. It's so nice that you guys are talking about that, and something that's always been a challenge, and more challenging now than ever, I think, is having places to go for youth. And so among those and other things, I really would like to stay engaged with you folks, so maybe we can keep the conversation going and move some of your ideas forward. So thank you.
Nancy?
Lots of good information and things to think about. Roughly how many kids participated, would you know, in the surveys?
Almost all students from all school we have. I know at the middle school, we have a designated time to...
I know at the middle school, we have a designated time to take the test. For the whole school, they will log on to their computers, and we all take it at the same time. And, I mean, if a student's not comfortable, they can express that, but there's a designated time to take it during the year.
So, the majority of the kids did?
Yes.
So, a lot of your statistics are concerning because here in Bennington, a lot of the issues are much higher locally than state level, so, and especially looking at the girls versus the boys, too. So, lots of things to think about.
I will say it's a bit harder to track at the high school, given that we don't have a designated time. The codes and stuff is usually given to flex teachers, and it's a lot easier for students to skip out of the high school because of the CDC being right next to it, and kids being able to skip class easily rather than opting out.
Yeah, I just know from experience on the prevention program at the middle and high school, so even though there is limitations in, meaning it's not so strict that all come to the high school, the numbers are still very high.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, like Jim was sitting here listening to the information you're providing, and I was wondering, you know, what the heck could we do on the select board, you know, because there's a lot of stuff in there that's more school board side. But I think the suggestions you came up with at the end there are exemplary, and I think Jim and I will make a point, make an appointment with you, and we'll see where we can, where we can take some of these ideas. So, thank you.
One more question.
Nancy?
Does your group just meet at school? Do you ever hold meetings where those of us on the board who wanted to attend could come and listen or participate?
So, we meet every Friday between 10:00, like 10:20 to 11:38. We do it every Friday, except for this Friday because we have a half-day this Friday, but those are the times we meet.
At the school?
In school, in school.
Okay.
Anyone in the public?
I just want to thank you. I mean, you guys are impressive as heck. I mean, when I was your age, I was learning how to tie my shoes, so, I mean, you're really something else. And to be concerned about your fellow classmates and the students, and I'll give you my number. You're one of the leaders of this. If you, well, I really don't want it all in public, but 442-9196, okay? You can't remember? Come on! They can remember it. Remember it. I'd love to help you out, and I think you're on the right track, and you're inspirational, I hope, to the rest of the kids in this community, that you don't have to just sit around and mope and feel sorry for yourself, but you can make a difference, you can make a change, and you can face life right on. And at your age, I just applaud you, I really do. So, thank you. Then don't let them down, select board, do something for them, will you?
Anyone else?
Excellent job, all of you. And I would encourage all of you to come to the Bennington Community Cafe on Saturdays, which is a free public space that anyone is welcome in, and I have personally really wanted to see more teenagers come, so please do. Every Saturday, 1:30 to 3:00 at St. Peter's Church. And from there, I would love to talk to anyone who does come about all of the excellent ideas that you shared tonight. You guys did a great job.
Okay, I have a question for you. Where would, like, what's the address of that place? Sorry.
It's St. Peter's Episcopal Church, which is 200 Pleasant Street, right in Bennington.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Lacy, I'm from Bennington, and my child is one of the people in the leadership group two years in a row. But as a town of Bennington, I don't think we should be really too surprised by what they're saying, because I was born and raised here, and I'm outdating myself a little bit, but we used to have a roller skating rink that was behind like Domino's. We used to have a movie theater on Main Street. We used to have an arcade on Main Street. We used to have, kind of near where, like across from Pizza Hut, we used to have a movie theater that had couches, and they served us food. We had a lot of things in this community that was really great. We had a bowling alley, you know, we had all these things. Now you go down Main Street, we do, we have a vape shop, we have wine and cheese tasting, which is, for me, is great, too. We have expensive coffee shops that are not reasonable price for our kids. We have breweries now, we have pubs, we have the attic, you know, we have a lot of these great restaurants that are bringing in adults, but as Main Street has grown, it's leaving out our children, our youth. We're forgetting about who is going to take over when we leave, and what are we giving them? We're giving them, you know, vaping, nicotine, alcohol, breweries, you know, expensive gift shops and stuff like that. So, we really shouldn't be surprised that our teenagers don't have a place to go. If any of you have ever been in Willow Park, or the rec center, or the splash pad this past year, I'm often there with sports. We do not have lights to play at night. We do not have speakers to play the National Anthem. We find needles on the playground. There's no security, there's no police presence. The rec centers, you know, it's not lit. You know, we really have not done our teens justice as we progress in the year 2025. We've actually gone back, and I'm pretty disappointed. I think we need to, you know, take our children, take our youth, and try to build Bennington a better community because I think we failed lately as we've seen the drug epidemic. You know, you can no longer get diabetes medication, you know, bins in bathrooms. Now we have them for needles, but they were never, you know, you know, I'm allergic to bees, nobody carries an EpiPen, everybody carries Narcan. So, I think we really need to go back and start back from the basis and support our youth and get our, get Bennington back to the way it used to be.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to speak on that a little bit. With the bowling alley gone, most teens do leave state just to go do stuff. There's not too much, like, I was just at Cross Gates Mall this last Saturday, and there was plenty of stuff to do, and I had a blast. But when I'm here in town, I just feel like there's not much to do other than just chill at restaurants or, like, get food and then go home and chill at that. And that's all you have to do for that.
We're going to have a skate park soon, right? We're going to have a skate park soon, and that should be pretty good. I understand it's very popular in Manchester, so hopefully it will be great, and if you're in town, you could walk there, it's wonderful.
Yeah, the skate park is going to be near Willowbrook now. Also, I had a question. I'm not saying this is like against y'all guys or anything, but would it be possible to like get gender-neutered bathrooms or do like what we do in school and have like pads in the girls' bathroom and stuff, around, like, in public places?
Thanks. Anyone else? I really do thank you guys. You guys talked about peer pressure being a cause of, or a symptom, I don't know, for exact, for a lot of the issues you were discussing. But I think you guys are an example of positive peer pressure, because I think real change is going to come from a peer-to-peer model. And, you know, adults, we can yell at teenagers till we're blue in the face, but I've been a teenager, and I was not really as receptive to hearing from adults as I was to my peers. So, thank you very much for being an example to the rest of the community.
I will say really quickly, this is the last thing you're going to hear out of me, peer pressure is a big thing, but I feel like the adults in our life are also a part of it. This is the last little piece of thing I'm going to put out during my research, for my notes specifically. I did find that according to the Vermont Department of Health, Bennington and Rutland Counties are among the highest with cannabis use. So, when it comes to substances, peer pressure's a big part of it, but I feel the adults in our lives should also take caution and care to educate themselves and stop reinforcing, not you guys, but in general, to stop reinforcing narratives that certain substances are less harmful, so they're better, when most substances, if not all, are bad for teenagers to use and shouldn't be encouraged.
Excellent. Guys, thanks so much. All right. Next, we have Dara Zink presenting to us on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's a hard act to follow, Dara.
As the parent of a teenager, though, I really, I really did appreciate that. This is going to work for me, Jonah? Am I pointing at you? Maybe not? Nope. Okay. All right, sorry, guys, this won't be as exciting as theirs, but we're going to jump right in. So, I am Dara Zink, and I work for Bennington County Regional Commission as the Emergency Management Program Manager. I have been working with the town of Bennington since this past July to update the town's 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan. On behalf of the team, I am here to share the process the team went through to conduct this update. Hazard mitigation plans are created by a community-driven process to identify hazards that impact the town and develop actions that can be taken to reduce risks and damage from hazards proactively. These plans are one of the requirements by the state to access additional emergency relief and assistance funds after a hazard event. I'm going to take a second just to clarify that this plan is about mitigation and is not the same as the local emergency management plan. I know you guys have seen my face for that one. So, that is a plan that is for emergency response. So, that's a re, a plan for a reaction. This is proactive. We are proactive steps that the town can take to help reduce or eliminate possible damage from hazards. All right. FEMA establishes the requirements of the plan and the planning process, which has four phases and a total of nine tasks. I will quickly recap each phase, the tasks, and the work that the planning team has accomplished. So, we're going to follow the little blue car. This is our little roadmap here. So, in Phase 1, the first phase was to organize the planning process and resources. The planning area was the town of Bennington, and we used multiple resources to gather data. These resources are listed in Section 4 and Table 5 of the plan, which I believe you all were given in your board packet. Awesome. Look at you guys. High five, gold stars, all around. All right, the second part was we built the planning team. And so, our planning team consists of our Assistant Town Manager, Dan Monks, the Chief of Police and EMD, Chief Paul Doucette, the Director of Public Works, R.J. Jolly, the Assistant Director of Public Works, Larry Gates, and then the man who wears, I think, the most hats I've seen, Paul Danseroe, the Director of Facilities, Building Inspector, Health Officer. Bill Camarda, the Director of the Bennington Rescue Squad, joined us, and Jonah, the Communications Coordinator, was also part of our team. The third task was to create an outreach strategy. The team obtained community feedback via a public survey, which was shared online on the town website and on social media. Paper copies were made available at the town office and at the senior center. Flyers with a QR code to access the survey virtually were posted around town at Jolly's, Revolution Fitness, Four Corners, Bennington Free Library, the Coffee Spot, Hawkins House in the Angry Egg, too, as well as the Community Market and the Senior Center. The survey was open and available to the public from October 25th to November 22nd, and results from the survey are included in Appendix 3 of the plan, if you're curious. So, Phase 2, there's our little blue car moving right along, we assessed the risks. So, we conducted a risk assessment as Task 4. So, the planning team utilizing historical data, future projections, and survey results evaluated, excuse me, evaluated each hazard from the 2017 plan, and the top five hazards were chosen to be addressed in this update. And, lower-risk hazards are not included in this plan due to low probability of occurrence and/or low impact, or are such a broad category, such as invasive species, that this plan cannot adequately address them. The full assessment can be found in Section 4, Table 7. Those chosen to be impactful enough to be addressed are floods and fluvial erosion, high wind events, winter storms, severe cold, and public water supply contamination. Phase 3, the planning team then developed the mitigation strategy. And this phase had two tasks, reviewing community capabilities and developing the mitigation strategy. So, Task 5, the reviewing of the community capabilities. As a team, we reviewed the tools and resources that Bennington has available to implement hazard mitigation actions. These are all listed in Section 5, and they have, these are the types of capabilities that we looked at, so planning and regulatory, administrative and technical, financial, and education and outreach. Task 6 was developing the mitigation strategy, and that include, we reviewed the goals, we came up with actions, and then we created the action plan. So, the mitigation goals from the 2017 plan were reviewed, and the planning team decided that they were happy with these goals and that we carried them forward into the new plan. Mitigation actions must meet the four types as outlined by FEMA, local planning and regulations, structure and infrastructure projects, natural systems protections, and education and awareness programs. We reviewed all 45 of the actions from the 2017 plan, rolled some over, updated others, and after some evaluation, removed some, as they may have been completed or not within the scope or capacity of the town at this time. The process can be seen in Appendix 1. There's a big table in there, has every action, and then if we carried it forward or why we didn't, all that good stuff's in there. New actions were created based on the risk assessment that we did, and then the planning team reviewed all of those actions and did a basic cost-benefit analysis for potential effectiveness, and this is reflected in Table 18. The planning team then gave each action a priority ranking and developed the final action plan as seen in Table 19. The plan now includes 20 actions that the plan can undertake to support mitigation. These actions can be found on pages 69 to 70 of the plan, and the planning team really worked to simplify this action plan. The previous plan had many broad actions. At that time, FEMA was kind of like accepting these broader actions that any town could kind of fill. This time, the plan instead focuses on fewer and more specific actions for the town of Bennington. Actions were ranked as high, medium, or low priority. The actions that are considered high priority may be considered as possible actions the town may want to address sooner than those listed as a lower priority. So, Phase 4 is, the next steps are to review, adopt, and then implement the plan. The plan was available for public comment for the month of May. It's still up, so we have a little bit more time. If you would like to provide some comment, we'll take that. The draft of the updated plan can be found on BRCRC's website, and I don't know how this happened, but that's okay. We also emailed it out to the surrounding towns, agencies that work with vulnerable individuals within our town, and other community groups for feedback, and comments can be sent to myself at dzink@bcrcvt.org. And if you memorize that, I'll high-five you. Any feedback received will be brought to the planning team for review and incorporation into the final draft. The plan will then be submitted to Vermont Emergency Management, VEM, for review by June 13th is our hoped-for date. If we get some more information, we can push that back a little bit. VEM will evaluate and let us know VEM will evaluate and let us know if there are any updates that should be made in order to meet all of FEMA's requirements. Once VEM determines that we have met all of the requirements, we will then be sent the approved pending adoption notice. The Select Board can then adopt the plan, and then it is sent to FEMA, so we have a lot of back and forth. Once received by FEMA, that agency will then issue the final letter of approval for the plan, and then the plan is officially active for the town. To keep the plan current, it should be reviewed annually in October. During this annual review, the town can take into consideration any projects that may need to be budgeted for. Actions can be updated as needed, removed if completed or no longer relevant, or new actions added if necessary to continue to work towards building a safe and resilient Bennington. So, the plan is not a static plan. It doesn't just live, this is it, and it just kind of sits there. FEMA has kind of changed tact with these plans, and they do want them to be more interactive with the town, so that, you know, you can add to it, you can take away as time passes and you see things. And then every five years, it is to be updated, and so at that time, you can do a full-blown update like what we just did and go through all of the actions as well. Any questions?
Start with Nancy.
Yeah, the concern, I've had a couple of meetings after going through this a month ago. Let me see what I have in my notes. How much was the grant awarded and who received the grant?
Dan, I'll let you go ahead.
It makes me remember numbers. I don't remember. Do you remember what our contract is?
It's between nine and 10.
Yes.
I think it's on the higher end.
Yeah. So, we did, the town of Bennington did receive a grant, and we used those funds to pay, to solicit and then choose BRCRC to work with us to develop the plan. And Dara's been, she won't ever toot her own horn, but she's been superb in this process, very efficient, knows how to nudge us when we need to be nudged, and it's been a great process to date.
Okay. So, the questions I have are tied to the information on Page Six. It says that in 2005, there was a plan, Bennington was part of a multi-jurisdiction plan completed in 2005. Now, did the Select Board approve it in 2005?
So, I have no specific recollection of that, but they'd have to in order for it to be effective.
And would the BRCRC have done that with town officials?
Boy, I don't.
So, that was a multi-jurisdictional plan, so I don't, it was well before my time, I was still in college.
No, I realize that.
When they did the multi-jurisdictional town, there was a piece that was, you know, specific for the region, and then very specific actions for each town, and then each Select Board would have to adopt those actions for their town. So, I can't speak specifically to Bennington, but that is how it was done previously.
And who else was part of our plan in 2005?
I, it, what I could find was that it was all of the municipalities in the region. I mean, I don't know as if like Glossenberry was, but it sounded like it was most of them.
Okay. It said FEMA approved the plan September 25th of 2017. It expired September 25th of 2022. So, we in Bennington have had nothing for almost three years?
It hasn't been enforced, but we have used it and done it. It hasn't been enforced, but we've reviewed it every year, and I provide reports to the flood insurance program folks.
Okay. Did anybody contact the state or FEMA that the plan expired, or did they contact us to ask why we didn't have one?
No one contacted us, but we were aware that it had expired and looked for funding to update it.
Why did they decide that everybody would have to go to a single plan rather than stay with the multi?
So, that seems to be, and I hate to speak for Vermont Emergency Management, that seemed to be a funding change that they've made, and they actually, over the last few months, were tossing around going back to multi-jurisdictional plans again. I don't know why, Nancy. They're up here, they're above me.
And I'm interested to understand how North Bennington already has their own single plan. Would anybody know the date that, did the trustees approve that?
I think they did, but I don't, do you know anything?
Yep, it's all on our website if you want to access it, Nancy. I, that was also before my time, that plan was done before I joined.
Oh, so they've had it more than a couple of years?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wasn't involved in North Bennington's process.
They go through their own process themselves.
But they must have had somebody help them, all they have is a board of trustees.
I don't know what they did, Nancy, but you'd have to check with the trustees.
I guess it concerns me that FEMA approved it, it expired in 2022, and I don't understand why everybody involved didn't get another plan in front of the Select Board to approve.
We waited till we had funding.
Sorry?
We waited until we had funding to do it.
And on Page 16, it talks on the bottom about starting to develop, where is it, about bike paths? The town has begun to develop a more formal bike pedestrian network to encourage the use of alternative modes of transportation within the town. Would the BRCRC be willing to come in the next month or two and share the plans for bike paths that are on your website that the public has never had a presentation on?
So, I'm going to answer that, Nancy, it is not correct to say that the public has never had a presentation on them, but certainly if the Select Board would like BRCRC and the town to come in and update folks on the bike path projects underway and planned, we'd be happy to do that once again.
And the additional ones that I saw when the zoning was being worked on, there's even more pathways, I mean, could we just?
Excuse me, point of order, Mr. Chair. It seems like we're starting to, we are quite off topic.
This is listed in here, Jackie, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Just make sure you keep it to the plan, and if you could refer to the section you're referring to, so we're all looking at it here.
And I lost Page 16. Well, I'll put it out there because I've tried for years to get a public presentation so citizens could have some input and feedback. That's it.
Jim?
Thanks, Dara, thanks for the hard work on this plan, good job. I had a question, and pardon me if I missed it, I noticed that Lake Parent Dam is flagged in there as a hazard with a high potential for significant damage if it were to fail. Is there any process that's being put in place to coordinate with all of the entities that are involved in the management of that dam?
I hate, I'm not laughing, because it is a very serious thing. North Bennington has been actively working for several months to get the emergency management plans in place by the dam owner, which is the state. There's been some back and forth with the state. It is in process. Paul Doucette is well aware of, you know, what could happen should the dam go. So, it's just another one of the things that has recently been put into process within, I'd have to say, North Bennington has been actively pursuing it since last fall, maybe last summer. And so, that is a big topic of conversation that is being addressed by them. And so, the state is also coming out with new dam safety regulations that are requiring dam owners to put certain things into place. I'm not super familiar with what those will be as they roll out, but instead of kind of being like, please do this, the state will actually be able to enforce some dam safety regulations. So, that will be nice.
You said the state owns that dam?
It's like, it's, it's being tossed around between Vermont Railway and VTранs right now. It sounds like it's landing in VTранs' hands at the moment, so.
Okay. Jimmy, you have something else?
Well, it, just to add, it has a long history of people trying to pass responsibility off to other agencies, to the Agency of Natural Resources, the Agency of Transportation, and others, so it is complex. But I do think that it would be a good idea to have a process, and I think we ought to have some representation for whatever process is in place. And the only thing I wanted to ask about, just for fun, right, because the cover is so good, like, those of us who've worked at the BRCRC or the town are very aware of this particular flooding situation, and it's just, it's very provocative to put it on the cover, but that is, I don't know, it's maybe more symbolic than a real serious hazard, but I wonder, is any, you know, if anything is moving forward on trying to deal with that flooding problem?
I'm going to hand that to Dan.
Yeah, so, Jim, just, I think it's been now two years before you joined the board, Select Board did authorize us to do an engineering study on that particular drainage basin, and we did do some, we did have MSK do some analysis for us, and then that was followed up by the state, just finished up a analysis of, they used that information and built upon it, and unfortunately, the only solution they could come up with is a huge underground storage basin, which, as you can imagine, has an astronomical price tag. So, we're, there are some other mitigating, mitigation measures we can take that would be much less costly but may not. The state said they didn't even think the huge basin would solve the problem, that it's just unfortunately something we could mitigate but probably not solve even with that measure. So, it's kind of one of those cost-benefit situations, and we are going to continue to pursue mitigation strategies that don't cost millions and millions of dollars for now, but if there's a grant that comes up that would pay for a huge underground basin, we might pursue that.
I'll keep my eyes out for you.
Ed?
If I could for a second, you mentioned earlier in your presentation that it should be looked, to keep us current, it should be looked at and perhaps updated in October of every year. That's the BRCRC who would be?
That's you guys.
So, it's actually pretty specific, Dara helped us with that section. So, actually, Chief Doucette's in my responsibility every year to take a look at it and flag anything that should be reviewed.
So, it's good to know, because the building of it was done with grant funding, and, you know, not to make this sound like a congressional hearing, you know, there's a big difference between an expired plan and not having a plan. This plan, although it has an expiration date, and I'm assuming that we're still living by it, can you?
The expired plan?
Yes.
Yeah, so I actually review that every year as part of our flood insurance program requirements, and I send a report up to them. And the kind of satisfying thing about it, frankly, is that most of the things that we said we were going to do, we've either already done or continued to do every year. So, it's kind of nice to look back at that and say, yeah. And then there's some that are like, that's probably never going to happen, but that's part of what the analysis we did for this new plan.
So, staying on that topic, the building of this thing that we used a grant for was for the purpose of building it, the cost associated with reviewing and updating every year, is it minimal enough so that we don't need a grant every year?
I think so, I sure hope so.
So, there's a difference between just the review and like doing a complete update. So, in five years, you know, Dan will say, hey, we've got to do a full update, and that's when we go through and we actually reprioritize all the hazards, and we look at the changes in weather patterns, and we do like the full revamp. Annually, you just want to look at and see, what have we done? Okay, so we can take that action off. What should we be adding maybe or thinking about with the budget? Like, this project might be something that, you know, you want to add into the budget or make sure that RJ has on his plate, you know, things like that. Those are just like simple, quick reviews that you do annually, but the full update is what we've been doing since July, and that was a complete revision of the plan, and we looked at all the different hazards.
So, I'm going to say this another way, in, a lot of the work that we've done up here in the last year or so, we've heard a lot about expired plans. We don't want that to spin when there's no spin to it. The plan did expire in 2017, but it's still in effect.
2022.
I'm sorry, 2022, still in effect and in force every year, and we have continued to mitigate hazard.
Yes. Just to give you a specific example of how this might be ongoing, used in an ongoing way, one of the specific explicit action items was to repair, if necessary, the levee at the Brooklyn Bridge area, and we've already, you folks had authorized us to hire an engineer to take a look at that, and we've already selected an engineer and we have to enter into contract, so the next, this next year, they're going to evaluate that, and if there are things that need to be done, next budget, we're going to bring that back to you and say, okay, here's the, here's the plan that our engineers come up with, maybe we can break it into pieces where it's more, you know, palatable from a cost perspective, or maybe we have to go for a big grant, but that's kind of the idea of every year, we look at it and see where we are.
That's a great example of the plan being in place and in effect, and we're always looking for ways to mitigate hazard. Thank you both very much for getting us this far.
Clark, did I see your hand before? Okay, I'm sorry. Jackie?
Yeah, thank you. I always like getting these thick packets, because it means someone did a boatload of good work for the town, so thank you for that. You mentioned during the presentation that you had selected sort of five categories of hazards to update in this round. Does that mean that the Hazard Mitigation Plan still covers other categories that were previously addressed?
So, the other categories, we decided not to move forward with at this time. This plan really, some towns use it for like infectious diseases and invasive species, and there's very little that the town can do for infectious disease. Invasive species covers everything from a bug to a plant to a water creature, and so it's hard for a concise plan that the town can use effectively to cover all of those things. Hale, right, that's another really tough one, so when the planning team looked at it, we, the planning team really looked at it with a critical eye, and what can the town effectively implement, what can we effectively address to make this plan worthwhile and not just a whole ton of papers, you know? Imagine how big that plan would have been if we did address hail and, you know, drought and invasive species and infectious diseases, and it wouldn't have been effective, you know? It would just be a whole bunch of paper, which the older plans, they, you know, some of them were just like, here's these actions that we're required to have, but they weren't super effective, so I appreciate the fact that FEMA has come and given us some of that leeway where we don't have to address every single one, you know? Earthquake, you know, unless you want me to hold up the building, I mean, you know?
Sure, sure. So, this is just like the stuff that's like is really critical for us to pay attention to.
Right.
And so, all of the actions that are listed here in the action plan, those all relate to the five hazards?
Yes.
That you selected as being the most worth our paying attention to?
Yes, correct.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone from the public cabinet, questions? Microphone, please.
Ken Millman, Bennington, Vermont. Saturday during the rainstorm, did we have any flooding damage in the town that we know about?
Not that I am aware of. I received no reports of damage from floods subject to that rainstorm.
So, I watch the rivers, and there's two river gauges, they're, one of them is on the Baton Hill, but it's in New York, but it gives us a general idea, and then the other one is in North Bennington, right, kind of on the border, I think?
In the Papernville Village area.
Yeah, and so, it didn't really get close this time, but it's an app called RiverAware, if anyone is curious and wants to watch the river, I don't know. But there is an app out there that you can monitor if you have any concerns and you want to see how close it's getting to action stage.
Jim?
I just add to that comment, as someone who lives down Route 67A, that the rivers didn't get too high, but some of the streams that feed into the rivers get pretty high, including the one that in... including one that in those heavy rain events always floods and causes the town to have to go out and put high water warning signs out along the highway. And that, that one is, is something to worry about, because it can really be a hazard. That water gets really deep, and cars, you know, if those signs weren't out there, might hit that water with some pretty good speed, and there could be some pretty serious accidents, so.
Yep. So we did indicate that that section there on 67 in our vulnerable areas. So we do recognize that that is one of the areas that is problematic during flooding.
Yeah, I just, I think I got it, but it's RiverAware?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Nancy?
I can appreciate the work people put into it, but I find it is a big deal that our town officials, where FEMA approved it, where it was expiring in 2022, and rather than getting an updated plan in front of the Select Board, it just kind of kicked around for three years. So I don't understand the benefit of not doing this. And this is a single, what expired was a multi-jurisdiction, right?
The multi-jurisdiction expired a long, long time ago. I don't want to conflate the two plans. The 2005 multi-jurisdiction is a different plan than the 2017 single jurisdiction plan.
Okay, then, then I guess I have no idea if the Select Board has even seen these plans and voted on them in the past. But I would think they would have needed Select Board approval, right? Votes?
That's correct.
Well, it concerns me that when we're talking with FEMA and things could have happened, how we're going to be covered if we haven't had this plan.
Well, the fact, the fact of the matter is, Nancy, even though the plan had expired technically, it was still in play. We still utilized the plan. We still measured the hazards that were potentially identified in that plan. So the plan was still in practice, if not at the appropriate date. So it's not like if the plan expires, we do nothing.
So if something had happened, we still would have been covered? It wouldn't have impacted our insurance?
That's correct. We would have reacted based on the plan that we had developed.
And FEMA wouldn't have had a problem that we didn't have an active plan?
Well, I can't tell what FEMA would or wouldn't do, but I don't think that FEMA would have an issue.
It doesn't, I can speak, it doesn't impact the FEMA funding, the funding.
Would it have impacted state of the state money?
It impacts a percentage of reimbursement from some of the state funding, but it goes, what is it, seven and a half to 12% if we had the plan?
Actually, for Bennington, it goes from seven and a half, because you have hit all of the other boxes, to 17.5 the state would cover.
But the federal is not.
But the federal stays at 75%.
Anything else from anyone? All right, so next steps, this goes above our pay grade, and then eventually will circle back to us?
Yes, it will circle back to you. So what we will do now is that we'll take back any feedback that we get to our planning team. We'll incorporate it into the plan. And then we send it to Vermont Emergency Management. They give it an initial review. If they feel like we haven't checked all the boxes, sometimes it's like we didn't say a specific word. They send it back, we make a correction, and then they give us, okay, now you're good. We bring it to you for adoption. And then once we get the adoption from you, I submit the whole plan to VEM. They share it with FEMA. FEMA gives it the little stamp, and then we get an official letter that it's approved.
Well, until then, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Jonah, are you, do you need that?
All right, next on our agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. I'd just like to point out that contrary to what people may have heard this evening or read online, we did not vote during any discussions in executive session about these matters. We did discuss the applicants to the various positions and came to consensus on the following slate upon which we will vote this evening. So the slate is as follows. CPARB, Lydia Winter and Jesse McFarland. Energy Commission, Chris Bates, Peter Manos, Phoebe Cohen. Development Review Board, Robin Outwater, Daniel Malmberg. Planning Commission, Rita Mastin-Leddy and Bruce Learman. Housing Authority, the one-year term, Shirley Adams. Five-year, Ron Hatchey. The Bennington County Regional Commission, Donald Campbell. And the open seat for the Historic Preservation Commission remains open, as that is the only position to which we did not have applicants. Our liaison positions, the Select Board liaisons, CPARB will be Clark Adams, if adopted. Energy Commission, Sarah Perrin. The Better Bennington Corporation, Ed Woods. Bennington Free Library, Jim Sullivan. And the Bennington Rescue Squad, Jackie Matts. So for the, could I please have a motion to accept the slate as presented?
Can I ask a question before we call the motion? Can you separate the liaison from the public voting? Can that be two votes? I need to abstain from one because I wasn't present.
Yeah, we could do that.
But I don't want to abstain from all.
Right, yeah. No, I don't have an issue with that. Does anyone else have an issue with that?
Thank you. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, sure. No, that's reasonable, I think.
So can, can I jump ahead and make a motion that we pass the slate for liaisons as stated? That's the motion that I would like to make.
Sure. Could I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of passing liaison positions as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. And could I have a motion to accept the slate of candidates as presented?
I move to accept the slate of candidates as presented.
A second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I'd like to know who's going to vote. I'd like roll call. And I agree with the rest of the board, most of the appointments to the various boards and committees. A few of the appointments I do not agree with, and that's why I'll be voting no.
All right. I'll accept a roll call vote.
Who will be voting?
We've already determined, yeah. Ed has already indicated that he will be abstaining, and we'll take it from down, down the line from there.
Okay, if somebody missed one of the meetings, how will that work?
I will trust the integrity of the individual board members to make that decision. So we'll start with Ed.
I need to abstain, because I was not able to participate in either session, just for clarity.
Clark?
All right, all right, yes.
Okay. Jackie?
I vote yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Sarah?
I vote yes.
And Nancy?
No.
Okay. The yeses have it. I appreciate everyone that applied. We had, I think this year, the fewest number of open seats to which no one applied in a very, very long time. And I find that to be very, very encouraging. So thank you to everyone, and we appreciate their upcoming and/or continued service.
Hey, Tom, I'm sorry, can I ask a question of the board?
Of course.
Did we, were incumbents interviewed this year? Were incumbents interviewed this time around?
Everyone that applied was interviewed, including incumbents.
That's very good to know. Thank you. That's, that's key.
All right. Onto the manager's report. Stuart?
Thank you. I indicated that I didn't have any action items, but one has come up since the packet was prepared. And it's, I'm asking if the board would be willing to meet Monday, June 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. to review the water and sewer budgets and potentially set the rates. We have included that in your packet. And if you agree to the meeting time, we will release it publicly. But the combined impact on the rates, I'm happy to report, is 2.35%. So I give Larry Gates and Melissa Courier a ton of credit for the work they did in preparation for these budgets. It left me little to do at my end, which is always good. So I present those to you and ask if you would be willing to meet on the 16th in a work session to review these budgets.
So I'd like to make that motion, that we schedule a special meeting for June 16th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Does I, do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any conflicts on the 16th? All right, all in favor of meeting on the 16th?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Great, thank you. Wonderful. And all my staff will be there as well. Just one quick note here. We have listening sessions scheduled for June 25th, which is a Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in this facility. And I have scheduled two sessions, and one in August and one in October. They are both on Thursdays, unfortunately, because the fire department is now using this building on Wednesdays for training sessions. So Thursday, August 21st, and Thursday, October 23rd, would also be scheduled for listening sessions here in this facility, generally from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. or thereabouts. But I wanted to let the public know that those were now scheduled, and the building is ours. And the last note here is Dan and I met with Kayla Becker and Taylor McGuire to discuss the continuing cost to manage the operations at the senior center. I'm happy to report that the $5,000 monthly fee that we agreed to when we made the changeover will continue for the next year. And the Y suggested that that fee include free memberships for the volunteers at the senior center in recognition of their service to the seniors and to the town. We were happy to agree to that. So we are now moving forward, beginning July 1, with that same contract, no change in the cost to the town, and a benefit to those volunteers who work at the center on a daily basis. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Jackie?
Still, I remember at a past meeting, there were some questions about sort of the transit for the senior center. Was that part of the conversation you had as well?
Actually, we didn't cross that line. I do have a call into, and I've actually had a phone conversation with Terrence at the Green Mountain Community Network, the bus system. I had hoped to be able to meet with him sooner than this, but I've been tied up with some personal issues and some time away. So I will give him a call and try to get together with him. But it really comes down to, I think, some difficulty in maintaining drivers and having drivers available for those. It's nothing that has to do with the Y or the operations at the center. It has to do with the Green Mountain being able to provide the drivers and the buses to meet the schedules.
And then we also received a comment this week with some concerns about how they're managing access to their restrooms. Can you speak to that at all? Or maybe we should have them come in if there's questions about that?
Access to the restrooms?
The rec center.
At the rec center, yeah.
Oh, at the rec center, yes, thank you. Ron Senior Center and all of them.
Well, Y and, yeah, yeah.
It's okay. I almost followed you. Yes, the Y, the Y has a security issue at the center. And when the addition for the United Counseling Service was placed on the building, they upgraded the securities at the center. So that in order to get into the building, you need to be a member or be coming to attend a program and be scheduled. And the question has now come from people who are working in the community garden as to how they might use the facilities. And I don't think, I haven't had a conversation with Kayla or Taylor about that. And I just recently received a question this year, this week, I believe from Ken. Folks who are using the trail system would also potentially have a difficult time getting into the center unless they were members. So we've got two issues there that we've got to work out. And I've got to work with Dan and potentially Kayla. And Dan's going to get up and tell me he's got it resolved.
Well, the garden, the community garden issue has been resolved.
It has.
So they have access, and that's not an issue.
Wonderful.
So now we just need to figure out how best to handle hikers. And I think, I think there's an option for how we can.
Do you know what they talk to me about? They go play tennis, and they want to use the rest of them, and they use it whatever they can.
Okay.
And it is an issue because of the new security system, but I think there's, there's a way that we can deal with it.
Great. Thank you, Dan.
Great. I'm glad it's on your radar. I'll trust you find folks to work that out.
Thank you.
And how many volunteers do they have at the senior center every day?
I believe there are something in the range of eight or nine volunteers who will receive the free membership.
To the Y.
To the Y.
And will everybody else who goes once in a while, they'll have to buy a membership?
No, no. Anyone who wishes to come to the senior center and simply hang out and use it as a place to just be with other people, that will continue to be free.
Okay.
If you wish to participate in the programs that are being held that are not free to anyone coming, and Bone Builders is one of those that is free to anyone who wishes to sign up. But if you want to use any of the other programs that are, require either a membership or a fee, those individuals must pay the fee to participate in the program.
But if there is financial hardship, scholarships continue to be available.
Scholarships can be, and that is a Y call, yes. On that note, I think there was a discussion a few months ago, which was even news to me. If we can make sure we get the word out to a lot of folks about some of these programs may in fact be covered under their health insurance programs. Yeah, and that is, that is something that the Y is really pursuing with the folks who come to the center. But you're right, Clark, that is, there are, some health insurances do cover some of the programs that are offered. Some, yes.
Thank you very much. Upcoming agenda, as we heard earlier, we'll be hearing at the next meeting from the Energy Committee. We will also have a presentation from the Community Cafe, and we'll be hearing from the BBC on their budget. Anything else I'm missing there, Stu?
I don't believe so. I think that's, there may be a couple of small items that come forward, but I think those are the big ones.
All right, well, those are some big ones.
Tom, did you say energy is on for when?
The next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Yeah.
This is a question, it's going to sound crazy. Was the presentation that we had tonight by the Choices Group a part of Alliance for Community Transformation?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks. I had trouble making that connection.
Yeah, yeah, that was the MAU and ACT Choice Group.
What a great thing to see, guys. Very adult problems being addressed earlier. I don't mean to repeat myself, but now that I've made that connection.
Yeah.
What a terrific organization.
Yeah, they're doing some really great work. All right, other business.
I have a suggestion for the agenda.
Okay, Nancy?
We're long overdue to invite the group, and that's been working on the new town plan, to give us an update. Citizens don't get to vote. It will just be the board. And I really want citizens to have at least a month to hear the new things that the Planning Commission and BCRC and Dan are adding in, so people have time to think and listen and give us feedback before we vote.
So everyone will have at least a month. We're going to have Planning Commission round of hearings, as well as Select Board round of hearings. And there will also be a public outreach from BCRC to try to get out to the community to talk about the plan. We expect that the plan will be ready for, to get out to the public, maybe mid-July. So that's when that.
That soon?
Yes.
I thought it was like, wow.
Hopefully, it'll be mid-July. That's when the public outreach from BCRC will start. That's when we'll start to schedule our meetings. And we hope to then get it to you folks. And I don't even want to say this, because, you know, everything always gets delayed.
I was thinking it was September, October.
We'd like to get it to you in September, definitely. That's our goal. BCRC has a schedule that they've been sticking to with the Select, the Planning Commission's been meeting every week. And I would expect by, like I said, mid-July, we'll have something that we'll make sure everybody gets to take a look at. Right now, I'm happy to send, you know, the pieces that we've been working on, but they're not coherent yet. So we hope to have a.
There's nothing posted on the Planning Commission website?
Not yet, no. Not yet, nope. Once we have it, we, once we have the, the draft, we'll make sure it gets out.
Didn't the Energy Committee give you what they wanted a few months ago?
They met with the Regional Commission folks and, and talked to them about it directly, yes. And maybe Ed knows more about that, but my understanding was that they had, they had already met with them and made comment.
Yeah, BCRC folks have been attending Energy Committee meetings regularly in the last couple of months because of the issue of putting them on the same page as it relates to town plan. They're working well together.
All right. Anything else? Sarah?
No.
Okay. And actually, Nancy did suggest, and I thought it was a good suggestion, to remind folks that if you didn't get your dog relicensed, we get a list.
A long list.
We have that list in our packet right now. I'm looking at you, Jack. No, that's, but please do get your pets licensed. It is very important, and it is the law, and I would encourage you to please do comply. It's, it's very important. If something, God forbid, does happen with your, involving your animal and it's not licensed, then I imagine that will contact, con, excuse me, confuse things with your insurance company greatly. So please do get your dog licenses updated. Jim?
Yeah, thanks. Stu mentioned the upcoming listening sessions, including the one coming up on June 25th, I think it is, and I just wanted to note that Jonah had put out a press release and created an opportunity for public, for the public to suggest topics, which we agreed that we would try, try to run with for these next couple sessions anyway. So if people want to give us a menu of topics to choose from for a listening session, please, please take advantage of that and get those suggestions in soon.
Jackie?
Yeah, thank you. I have two quick things. First, this Saturday, June 14th, is the annual Bennington Pride March and Block Party. So that'll be downtown, marching through Four Corners around 11:00 a.m., and then there will be a block party at the Splash Pad from roughly 11:30 to about 3:00. So I hope many of you will come out and celebrate the day with us, and if not, I want you to be aware of a brief delay to traffic right around Four Corners. The second topic I wanted to bring up was related to a, a number of public comments that we received about board decorum. I didn't want it to go completely unaddressed, but there has been some, some internal discussions about how we can work together more collaboratively and effectively, and so I just want to assure the people that commented that we are having those discussions, and I hope you've seen the fruit of some of that tonight.
Clark?
Uh, nothing that I think we have any control about, but hopefully we'll have a dry weekend.
And Ed?
I'm just looking for my own name on this list, and I'm hoping it's not there for the right reasons. It's unregistered dog list. That's all I got.
All right. We have need for an executive session to discuss contracts, so could I please have a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter executive session.
Can I have a second, please?
A second.
All right, Clark. Thanks, everyone, for coming. We'll give you a couple minutes to clear the room.